All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council to order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge sounds pretty good with a packed house, doesn't it? During roll call, everyone is present except for Councilman Collison. Do we have any public comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to adopting the agenda. We do need to make one modification I know was taking off.
K two?
K two, yep, K two. So we'll remove that item and then. Okay, so we're gonna move K five up to basically be K two.
Yep.
And then K three. Okay, any other changes?
A motion to adopt the agenda with those changes.
All right, I've got a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Moving on to, let's see, we're gonna have the presentation of the 2023 Isani Ambassador candidates. And I think they just wanna kinda come up and.
Okay, hi, my name is Jocelyn. I am one of the current 2022 Isani ambassadors.
I'm Bridget, also a current 2022 ambassador.
My name is Lauren Schrader and I'm running for Miss Isani Ambassador.
My name's Chloe England. I'm running for Miss Isani Ambassador.
Hello, my name is Annabelle and I'm also running for Miss Ambassador 2023.
And then with us is almost all of our junior candidates. We have a total of 12, but not all 12 are here with us today.
That's a, that's a pretty big number. That sounds great. I was doing a little research. I wanted to try to figure out, you know, what, what do the ambassadors do and stuff like that before our meeting and so I could pretend like I kinda, you know, know things, so. But it looks like you guys do some awesome stuff and I couldn't believe, they go to like 150 to 200 events a year is what it said, I thought. Is that right?
I guess I didn't look at it as that much, but yes.
Wow, yeah, that's a lot.
So it is a great program. My sister was an ambassador in 2011 for Isani. I think it's great. It, it gives young women the chance to kinda expand and get involved with the community and I think it's a great opportunity. So I appreciate everybody that's involved with it.
Our third ambassador, Sophia Williams, is the current holder of the Shelby Merrill Award.
Yes, thank you.
I'd also like to just make a comment that we appreciate all of your help at our city events. Say, we're at the street dance this weekend or the Amp It Up this weekend and attend street dances and are helping with Splish Splash, so it's great. Thank you, guys.
We enjoy it.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks, ladies.
Great job.
All right, moving on to approving the city council minutes. Do we have a motion to approve or any questions if you guys want for the June 6, 2023 city council meeting minutes?
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. For announcements, we've got the Park Recreation and Culture Board meeting on Tuesday, June 27th at 6:00 PM. City offices will be closed for the Fourth of July holiday. We have our city council meeting then moving to Wednesday, July 5th at 7:00. And the Economic Development Authority meeting Wednesday, July 5th as well, following the council meeting. Do we have any council committee reports?
I do have one. So for the May School Board meeting, we've seen an uptick in online school enrollment the last couple of years. It was interesting to find out that it was most commonly used by people that would like to have a job when they're in high school so that they have more flexibility, so they can work a normal job and then do school after hours versus the other way around. It's also good for people that are having social issues or bullying problems. That kinda goes away when you're online. The trailer houses were moved out of the elementary school about a month ago, which was nice to get those finally moved out of there. That was quite a long fight with that.
Did you help out with that kind of a little bit?
Yeah, I, I tried.
Did it end up working out or no?
I tried to help out with it, but then they, they must've figured something else out, cause I never heard back, but. Yeah, we had planned on maybe welding some sort of hitch on in my buddy's truck to get him moved at least, but they got it taken care of, so that's good. I wanna give a huge shout out to Open Box Buys. He donated thousands of dollars of items to the intermediate school. He's an Isani resident and I really appreciate that he's giving back to the community as well as MinCo. They donated $500 to the school, to the schools. There's also $2,000 donated to the 5th Grade Conservation Day, which is the county park's biggest event. And I'm on the county park board and that one is a really awesome event for 5th graders. They come and see the parks and learn about nature and it's our biggest attended event and it's great that there's people that are willing to donate to help provide that for students.
Absolutely. Any other council committee reports? All right, moving on to business item K1, Resolutions to Consider Request by Wayne Butt/GFY III LLC for an Amendment to the Conditional Use Permit.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have the applicant Wayne Butt and his wife Angie here to, they applied for a conditional use, conditional use amendment to their current permit, which would remove the language requiring them to pave their, the remainder of their parking lot. And holds a letter of credit on the parcel, so we'll release the letter of credit and remove that language. The variance accompanies that because it does require a variance not to require the pavement of the parking lot. And we did have to go through the findings of fact and due to this being in the R1A RC District, recreational commercial, the nature of the rural aspect of this business, it does fit and the monetary cost is substantial and would be a hardship for the business, so it does meet all of the findings of facts for both the variance and the conditional use amendment.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion to approve the canceling of the letter of credit and the request for the variance from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. So moving on now to what will be the new K2 Cannabis License Discussion.
Excuse me, evening, Mayor and Council. This particular topic, I wanna bring up just to gain some clarification and get some direction. As we all have figured out now, cannabis is legal, at least in some stage here, right? One of the things that I need to make sure Council is aware of and can provide some direction on is that, starting in what they expect to be January 2025, we will have to register at least one licensed retailer in city limits. Now, if nobody is seeking to, to open a shop here, then ends up being a moot point. But the legislation does allow for a municipality to hold that license. This would then look similar to the liquor store. Before I go down that path and all of the planning and work, I need, would like to know if this is something that the council wants me to look into further. And there's a lot of uncertainty there. There are issues with being able to take credit cards, how I would manage internal controls since we'd have to probably do cash-only transactions. Whether or not if we want to be the license holder for the city, whether or not the state would give us priority de facto or not. Or whether we might go through the planning process, submit for a license, and then the state choose someone else. I don't know those things. Another thought to consider, and this is to my money, this is probably the biggest difference between this endeavor and the liquor store is, with, with the liquor store, we have had a monopoly, right? We are the licensee, right? That's it. It's us. We don't allow anyone else and we can maintain that essentially in perpetuity. With the way I'm reading the cannabis legislation now, after population exceeds 10,000, if there was another applicant, we would be compelled to register that licensee. At that point, even if we had an endeavor that was particularly profitable, it may or may not be as profitable at that point in time. So I'm just looking for some direction from the council as to whether or not this is something we want to look into and see where it goes and how it works out, or if we can, or if the council just wants to say nope.
Are the licenses specific to population of the city? Because I read somewhere where if the county, let's say for example, had a population of 12,000 and the county decided to give out a license, then the city wouldn't be required to put one out because for the population, there's already a license out there. So I'm going to assume for the area, Cambridge and Isanti, that there'll be enough permits that if we did decide to have that permit ourself, that we wouldn't have to worry about that second permit over 10,000. I'm not sure. That would have to be looked into a little bit more.
That's one of the things. Also, there's a question that I'm not clear on, which hopefully it gets some guidance, is if we had to have a sec, a red, remember, the state would license it and we would register the licensee, right? Could we be the second too? I, I don't know.
I'm not even sure that there would have to, there would be a requirement for a second if it's based more countywide. I'm, that was my question. And the other question I would have is, it's a cash business right now. Can the city put cash in? Do we, would we have to worry about that? How would we, how would we manage that? I mean, can't, you can't really put it in the bank is what I've been hearing. I mean, do we give?
I suppose we should maybe not say too much about what the plan is, but yes, that is correct that that's a concern.
Okay.
We would not be able to take credit cards, almost certainly.
So why?
It would have to be a cash business and how we deal with that on the backend, I have some thoughts, but maybe we don't.
Why is it cash only?
Cause at the federal level, it's still illegal and so most credit card processors will not guarantee that if you take, say, $10,000 of transactions, they, they won't guarantee that those funds won't be frozen and you will not receive them.
And my third question on that is, would, could we in the future be denied federal funds because we, as a city, hold that permit? So let's say we have a natural disaster like a tornado came through the city. I know right now the administration that's in, in there right now, I think they're turning a blind eye and letting the states do what they want. In fact, they'd probably legalize it nationwide if, if they had the votes, but would we, I mean, what are the odds? Could, could they deny us any federal funding in the future? Has it happened in the past? That would be the question. Have they denied any cities in any other states funding?
To my knowledge, I'm not aware of another state that allows municipalities to endeavor upon this.
Oh, other states? There, this is, or?
Other states that allow cities.
Right.
To do it.
So this is the first state that has allowed municipalities to do it? Oh, so what kind of, this is new territory.
As far as I know, we are the first state to say, yes, a municipality can hold the license and be a retailer.
Okay.
So that's, that's new ground. And, you know, I think on the federal stuff, I suppose they could. They, I suppose they could, but I don't know how you would know that ahead of time.
So, so if this is a retail business, do retail businesses in Isani pay a sales tax to the city?
No.
Okay, so, okay, so it's not really our concern if it's all cash sales. How do you monitor what they actually sell? That's not our concern then? Cause that would be something, say, if we didn't hold the permit, then there's gonna be another company that comes in and if it's, if it's all cash sales, the government can't track it, so they might not be claiming as much as they're actually making versus at least the city would more likely be compliant with federal tax law.
Yeah, I mean, really, the incentive there is, is you wanna be above board because you wanna maintain your license, you wanna continue to make money, but auditing, auditing after the fact, yeah, when it's all cash, that is a little tougher. It's not impossible.
Right.
But it is a little tougher. But yeah, I mean, generally, the, the threat of losing a license by not maintaining your books and not paying the taxes the way you're supposed to would, would, would be enough incentive to get people to, to play the right rules theoretically. Yeah, this is a discussion I'd had with prior mayor as well, is the idea is, well, if we are going to have to license a, or register, actually is the correct way to say, if we're gonna have to register a licensee inside of city limits, you know, do we want it to be God knows who? Or would we rather be the ones that are in control of it and being certain about who is and is not being served and how that is going and whether or not officers are allowed in or not at any given time? If it's a private endeavor, Travis can't just show up anytime he wants for any length of time he wants. If it's city-owned, Travis can show up whenever he wants for any length of time he wants.
And it is, it is required by the state to regulate the business, so the city is responsible to regulate any, any dispensaries we put in within the city limits. I'm a true capitalist. I mean, I really believe that, that somebody, a public person should own, own that permit, but on the flip side, I was even against a liquor store being owned by the city. But seeing how much good it does for the tax base and how we're able to offer more amenities to the city residents, I see it as a great asset. And I don't believe that the city residents pay any more for their liquor store purchases than they would if they went somewhere else. So I believe we could stay in great competition and I I'd like, personally, I'd like to see the city look into it more.
Yeah.
And the ins and outs of it all. And, and other cities have put a moratorium on, on bringing permits or even going forward. I think there was Moundsview or one of them just did a one-year. We could do like a six months, just hold this, discuss it more and figure out which direction we wanna go because obviously there's a lot of research we need to do to be able to bring this forward. About all I got to say on it right now.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you this, for 12 years that I've been on this council, I've defended the city owning that liquor store. I'm not about to lose what we have with that liquor store. I, and the, the biggest argument that I have is the city shouldn't own a business. Now, back in the twenties, it was God's given right to municipalities and cities to have liquor stores. I personally, and my belief is, I just soon let somebody else have it. Let somebody else have the cannabis licensing. I, I, I think we have enough with what we're doing with the liquor store. I'm defending that liquor store to the bitter end. I'll die saying, as long as the city can still have that liquor store, I'm gonna stand behind it. But I think this is a different venture. It's a different time. I just think that we should allow somebody else to capitalize on it rather than the city. Defending the public's belief that the city should never be in business and competition with any other business. That's why I agree with that.
I, but we have to regulate it, so that.
We're still gonna end up regulating, one way or another. We're gonna have to regulate it somehow. It's, we could, when, if we give out a license, we can still state in stipulations with that license that we could have inspections. What they do with their taxes, the city of Isani can't do anything about that tax dollar. That's gonna be on a state and federal level. There's nothing, cause we have no skin in the game of them collecting that tax. Nothing.
The only, the only problem with that potentially would be if, I mean, if we have to regulate it and spend our staff time to make sure that they're compliant, but they're making the monies, there's no tax, there's no benefit to the taxpayers.
Well, trust me, if they break, if they break the law, we'll benefit from it. Plain and simple.
How so?
If they're not, if, if they're not complying and they're selling it to, to minors or whatever, that's gonna be a judicial fine. Plain and simple. When you give them that late, right, to have that license and they're upfront and know that, dude, I can show up here at any time and check on you. It's just like going to a gas station and selling cigarettes to minors. It's no different than that. It's what this law, this, this cannabis law is going to be in effect, it's going to be just like tobacco sales. So I, I just, I just, that's my belief and I, I just am not one for giving that. I'd let, I'd just soon let another business deal with that. I wanna defend our liquor store and our liquor store is doing us great deals. I don't wanna have to keep defending them harder and harder. And then they have to defend it with another situation that we shouldn't probably be involved in.
How hard will the process be to determine who gets a permit if the city doesn't take it? I know they, they formed a Department of Equity and that you have to, you have to scale your applicants and i- is that gonna be a process that, that the city may see as?
I'm not sure. I'm expecting that, what is it, the Office of Cannabis Management or whatever the title is.
Right.
I assume that they're gonna provide some guidance on that, but right now, like I said, I don't know if we would de facto get priority simply as a municipality.
Well.
Or if that would work against us. I, you know, I don't know, but, you know, at the same time, I don't wanna spend too much, I didn't wanna spend too much time ahead of this conversation.
Right.
To get into this stuff unless I know that the council wants to.
Well, I know as a city council, when we have to choose an applicant, if we choose not to do it ourselves, that we have to follow certain guidelines, like I, I read where if you were in the military and you were dishonorably discharged from the military because of marijuana offense, you would get higher equity. And I, and I, I don't understand what that means, higher equity than, you know, what, that's why I said, how difficult will that process be? Are you, or would we be opening ourselves up to?
I don't know.
Lawsuits or?
One thing that you're thinking there though is that there's only gonna be one license, so I think, I'm more in the line of thinking, and I think on principle, I think we're probably all more in the line of thinking that the city shouldn't be involved in business, right? So I mean, I think we probably all agree on that, that it's, in just theory and principle, we don't think that the city probably should be involved in any more business than it, than it already is, right? So the liquor store is kind of a unique exception to that and that it's always been that way since the end of prohibition and it kind of has continued to be that and it's hard to, it's hard to go away from that and we weren't there to make that decision at the time, but we are now. So, you know, this is a similar situation to what that was, so I think in my opinion, it should be as many licenses as they wanna have and, and allow the free market to dictate winners and losers. And I think having, having one license is, you know, kind of opening it up to basically us favorite, you know, like you said, I mean, we have to kinda weigh the, the different equity and all that kinda crap. And I just think you, you let the free market reign and, and I don't think it's a societal good to have this happen necessarily, but I think it's something that's, that's probably being used already the way it is and it's out there and it's something that's, it is what it is, you know? So in my opinion, I think we just, we open it up, let competition rule the day and, and, you know, leave it at that, you know? I think that's, then we don't have to worry about being, you know, picking and choosing winners and losers. It's just whoever wants.
As long as they qualify and have the right shop.
If you qualify and you follow the rules, then, you know, go ahead and try it and, you know.
So one of the reasons I moved this up was when I read that ordinance, it defined cannabinoids as smoking. So I was wondering if every shop in a city that can now sell gummies or whatever would all automatically be eligible then for a license to dispense marijuana too. So that, that was one of my questions. And the other, well, we'll just leave it at that. I have another question of the liquor store.
So we can move into the next item, Mayor and Council, if you'd like, but to conclude that first one, was the consensus for staff to spend some time and resources to dig into this deeper about a possible municipal dispensary?
I think it's, from what I'm gathering, I think it's gonna be a two-two vote.
Yeah, that's what I would say if you guys aren't.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be interesting to look into because, I mean, the, the benefit, I mean, the liquor store brings in, what was it, $600,000 of extra revenue a year that goes directly back into taxpayers, into what we do. So I mean, I would rather, I would, it would be nice to see the city get that and be able to get taxed less, but at the same, but at the same time, right, the market, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a free market capitalist too, you know, I'd rather have the market talk. But at the same point, if we're gonna have to regulate these companies that come in and wanna sell these products, it's gonna cost the city money. And if we're gonna be regulating stuff like that already, we might as well just make the money ourselves.
We already do and, you know, like Steve said, with tobacco sales, I mean, it's not really gonna be any different than that. I mean, that doesn't take a whole lot of your time as far as a police department, I would think, to, to do any of that. I mean, it's not a, a big job to go in and, and I don't, do you guys actually, we don't even do it for tobacco in town, right? The county does, yeah, right, cause they're the ones that do the license.
There's a lot more money in marijuana, though.
But, well, right, but we already have the infrastructure now with our, our cannabinoid, I mean, we're just gonna talk about, that's the next thing we've got. We've already got the tools to license it and the tools to, we've already done all the work on that, so. So there is, to, to the enforcement part of it, right? They, they are leaving it to cities to enforce within their jurisdiction, right? But part of that is, is the, I forget what the sales, I forget what the tax is on it, 10%? Then out of that 10%, half and half, half goes to general fund, half goes to like a city, a city-county fund, and we will get, we would get a portion of that. So we, I mean, and it's not gonna be, you know, there, there's no scenario, I can't imagine any scenario where we're getting like 100,000 bucks, but we'll probably get, you know, five or 10 grand or something, you know? I mean, so we will get some of that tax on the, on the cannabis back. There's directly supposed to help fund the enforcement.
Or we can raise the license fee too and cover that cost of, of enforcement if we think it's gonna be more to do it, so.
There is a maximum license fee and that's what I was gonna ask you. What is the maximum license fee? And then also, on part two, back to your tax question, or tax answer. Because they did not make it clear, it looked like all the tax revenues statewide goes into one fund and then gets dispersed, or is it so, or is it just the taxes that were collected within the county? The state gets X amount and the municipalities, county, everybody else gets another amount. It's, it looked like.
That part is not super clear yet, right? So you were correct that it is going into a bucket, but you can, you can use a formula to send it back out absolutely pro rata as it went in, or you could send it out. Well, so you could do it pro rata based on the revenues that going in, but you could also do it pro rata based on the number of instances, right? So I could say, well, this one generated half a million dollars of revenue, that's gonna get this portion. Or I could just say, this is one, this is one, this is one, and it doesn't matter how much they paid in. So I, I, that part's not clear how that is going to work. I would assume that's, you know, ends up being an administrative law thing. The cannabis office is gonna make a determination on that, that they feel fits inside of the, the statute and that is going to be it. That is. The other part to clarify here is, is a state will license a retailer, we will register that licensee. So there will be limits. I mean, we aren't gonna be able to just put, we aren't gonna be able to just put on any caveats we want or that we can come up with. There, I mean, there's gonna be a narrow field of like, you will register this entity and you can go between here and here. That's it. And there are some details that I, I do not know about that, but that, that's the rough framework of how that would work.
So I, I wanna clarify that. So somebody applies to the state and says they want a dispensary license.
So just to, just so you're aware, it's the Office of Cannabis Management and there's 14 different licenses that they have it broke down to, depending on where they fall.
Okay, so they would approve that person and then that person would come to council and say, I would like to put a place in here or here or an existing building is, that would be pretty much the process? We wouldn't have a say if somebody can't walk in a door and say, hey, we wanna, they have to have a license in hand before we can do anything.
Yes, and you, we would be compelled to register one.
Right.
We could register as many, I mean, let's say seven.
We could register as many, I mean, let's say seven, let's say seven local people were like, yep, we all want to do it. And the state says, yep, 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 yep. And council can be like, no, just one. Or council can be like, mm, yeah, all seven, sounds great.
So, we could make a recommendation, don't come in front of us unless you have a license in hand. I mean, because otherwise you could have 20 people coming in saying, we want to do it and then we have to go through the process of.
Yeah, no, if they have not already been licensed with the state, that, they, that's step one. They, the state has to say, yes, you are licensed. Then they register with us and the purpose of the registering is to allow enforcement.
Okay.
That as well as anything else that we have within city code that has the, the, there's very few things that we can limit, but it's distance from schools. It's retail areas. There's some zoning things that we can do, as well as how many registrations we want to allow to have within, licensed retailers within the city limits, but that's what they're coming here for, not to ask for license, but for the other things that we can do.
I also seen that, was it in the last bill or is it in this new bill that liquor stores can now sell in municipalities, uh, cannibal, uh, chew gummies or whatever they are?
Yes, they can.
Okay, has council ever talked about doing that?
So, we're gonna get into that on this next item when we talk about the ordinance.
Okay.
I would like to see information considering a municipality, but I don't know how much effort that's gonna take or time.
I think, I think initially, I think a lot of it will be hurry up and wait. I mean, there's a whole lot of lawyers in the state of Minnesota trying to figure out what kind of guidance to give. And then a lot of that advice is going to be dependent on the Office of Cannabis Management, or I think that's right. You know, what the guidance they put out. So, some of it's gonna be just hurry up and wait. And, you know, there's only so far we're gonna be able to get, because there's so many of these points, like George has brought up, there's so many of these points where it's like, until you get clarification, it could go this way, it could go this way, you know?
I would still like to, if, if we don't want to spend any time of staff's time right now, I'd like to put some kind of moratorium on it, like six months, just to be able to get some more clarification on, on this whole situation as far as.
And we, we don't want to issue somebody, say they can come in here and then all of a sudden the government changes what they, their direction on something and then we have to try and take someone's away. We, we can't, we shouldn't be doing that either.
It's gonna, it's gonna take the state over six months before they even get this thing figured out.
Yeah.
And before they even start issuing licenses. But going back to this item, I, it's just a discussion if the city wants to take it on or not. And I, I'm, I'm dead set against it, so, I mean, we could sit there and beat this thing with a dead horse for days and days. The state still hasn't, they've put in the cart in front of the horse on this whole situation.
You wouldn't expect them to do anything different than that, would you?
But it's just, I guarantee you, there's, nothing's gonna happen within the next nine months from the state on this.
Yeah, I think we have lots of time to really decide, but if you want, if we want to bring it, this particular topic of whether the city should be the only licensee back to maybe the next council meeting, um, when Dan is here and, and kind of see what his thoughts are. Because I think right now we're kind of two to two probably on, and I don't disagree with you guys that it would be sure nice to have that cash coming in to the.
And being able to regulate it better. I mean, if there's, we can regulate our, our own business so much better. If there's somebody that's a problem in the, uh, having alcohol in the city of Iscany, maybe our liquor store, I don't know if we can limit that as a liquor store already or, I mean, what if someone were to get a D W I smoke from cannabinoid products? Can we limit their ability to buy it from our store or is that, I mean, that could be something. I mean, there's a lot of people that are gonna be smoking weed and driving, so that's, that's another.
Do you know that's a state law? If you have a B card, you're not, there are liquor stores and bars not allowed to sell you alcohol?
A B card?
Yep.
What's that?
It's restrictions on alcohol and drug use. So, if you are, if you look at somebody that's restricted, I have a B card. I haven't drank in 35 years. I could have it removed. I don't care. It's not a big deal to me. But technically, they are not allowed to sell to you. I could walk into the bar, the VFW and buy you a drink, but legally they should, they're not supposed to allow it to sell it to me.
So, that's exactly the point. If there's somebody that's not.
But I'm just saying it's already there, nobody goes by it.
But the city would go by it more so than a private business, maybe, because, I mean, we're government, so we have to. More so than a private business. If I were to own a private business and I'm like, hey, this guy wants to buy a thousand dollars worth of product, you're probably not gonna turn him away, but the city would be more likely to. That's another, that's another.
It's, it's, it's an argument in another day.
Yeah, right.
Seriously, it's, I'm just stating the fact, there is already stipulations for those things to happen.
Mike? I, I got a question. Let's just say in theory, we get a third vote on this. Could we designate those profits to a certain like park and rec? Or just for amenities for this residence or whatever that may be, like all that could go towards amenities?
So, that's a good point. It's, it's, if, if we were to endeavor upon this, everything worked out, you know, and it ended up being, you know, a similar endeavor to the liquor store. That's an enterprise fund. The only requirement there is that it be self-sustaining. Any profits that are available, the council would direct those with the budget annually. So, if you want to say, all right, we made a hundred thousand dollars free and clear last year and we want that to go to parks or to police or to, I mean, you can, that's it, yeah, you direct it. And it would, and you could, I mean, you could take further action, right, and put it into city code, make it harder to modify on an annual basis. You know, you can take those different types of steps, but yeah.
Okay, I just.
Yep.
So, I have another question since you brought up the enterprise fund. So, with illuminated Iscany, can people come into Iscany and would we allow them to do the same type of thing? Is that, is there, they could do that? So, that's not a monopoly? Okay, I was just curious.
All right, well, let's bring that back, uh, maybe the next council meeting and we'll have a full discussion on it. All right, so moving on then to K three, we kind of started maybe talking about this a little bit, but if you wanna.
Yeah, so I'll provide some more information. It's a very complicated issue. Uh, not to complicate it more, but we can look a little bit of what the county is doing as well. And just so everyone's aware, it's one registration for every 12,500 residents, not 10,000, just to make sure that that's out there. And if the county does allow.
That's a minimum though, right? You can do more.
You can do, allow, or you don't have to have any restriction, but that's the minimum. Yep, one per 12,500. Now, for example, if the county was to allow retailers within the county, we don't necessarily have to have one in the city either. It can be countywide, um, meaning that population one of, a minimum of one per 12,500. The reason why I bring that up is because there is some talks at the county level about them doing a moratorium, so they can dive into this further and look at, at everything, because it is a very complicated issue. So, I wanted to make sure that council was aware of that. To my knowledge, they have not done a moratorium yet. They're just at that, um, the beginning stages of talking about potentially doing one. And maybe if the cities wanted to do it as well, so we could look at it as a countywide system. So, wanted to throw that out there. Now, I did not propose a moratorium for the city, because we, if you remember, we had a moratorium on what we were allowing to sell um, as it related to the Delta nines, Delta eights and those low potency cannabinoid products. So, what I have before you is a draft ordinance. It has been posted for the 10 days, so you, council could take action this evening if they wanted to. Um, but what this does is it makes sure, ensures that we're in compliance. So, as Mike had stated, the cities won't have the authority to license anyone. So, there's 12 different licenses that will be available, depending on what you're doing with the product, but the city doesn't license. So, I changed the verbiage and the language within our ordinance that we had passed and amended it to say registration already. We know that cities will have the ability to do registrations, so we can have that, what limited local control they gave us and have the ability to turn away if they don't meet those, but we are not actually the licensure. So, you'll see that license is stricken out in red and replaced by registration. Uh, the other thing that I did remove in here and it got a little bit interesting in taking away the licensees, but I think that the language works. We did, did, did have the city attorney review it to make sure that it looked okay as well. I do know that this ordinance will need to be amended again. Once we get more direction from the state of what they're doing, this will come back and I'm gonna guess it's gonna come back a few times. We'll just keep up with it. The other thing that by definition, exclusive liquor store was, was not allowed to have these products in there. Now, with the new law, we know that liquor stores, exclusive liquor stores such as our muni can have edible products. Now, there are some rules that go along with that, um, that we have to dive into and just determine if that's something that we will do here and council be a part of those decisions, but at least at this time, I'm just removing that language, because the new law removed that language. Doesn't mean we're selling it, but means that we can do some things. There are, is THC infused liquor products, um, which fall into a different category of edibles. So, allowing us to have things that are permitted, they can be sold at, at our liquor store like they are at other liquor stores. Really, that is it. It was, it's a lot of red line information in here. Again, taking out just that license, because we don't have the ability to do so, to keep up with it. And we called it a re- registered establishment. Now, the reason why, um, well, I do have the ability to post ordinances and bring it before you as a draft, such as this to take action if you deem worthy, um, is because, as you remember, we do have applications coming in from businesses that were waiting, because we had the moratorium in place and I thought that it was best not to keep them waiting unless it was council desire to change and do another moratorium. But then the fee would be the same, which is the hundred and fifty dollars, but instead of it being a license, um, it would be a registration. So, those would come on the following council meetings coming up for the businesses in town. We did have CBD joint that was allowed to continue to sell, um, but then when we put that moratorium, we had other businesses who wanted to sell cannabinoid products that couldn't until they get our, our license, which would now be registration. So, it keeps them moving along unless that's not the, the desire of council.
I, I have a couple of questions on that. So, is it, is THC regulated? Okay, so marijuana, in the smoking form is regulated by the federal government. So, the THC infused drinks, let's say, at the liquor store, would, would we have to worry about the cash process on that?
Very likely, yes. Um, and we would also have to apply for a license for a low potency license, um, for the liquor store to even be able to sell those.
Okay.
We're still working those details out, but yes, at this time.
Okay, and then I wanted to clarify a question that I asked earlier. With this new ordinance, okay, it includes smoking marijuana, um, in a smoking form. So, all these places that want a license to be able to sell, sell it, if smoking is included, my thought is, would it be easier for them to get a license with the state? And would be, would it be harder for us to refuse them, to put a dispensary in that place since we already included that language in our ordinance?
I think what this language allows us to do is to have a registration process for THC infused vape products at this time. But I think that as we learn more and they start off, giving licenses, which they're not doing yet, that Office of Cannaboy Management, um, or whatever it's called, um, they haven't started issuing those licenses yet, but as they start issuing license and they're kind of phased in for a couple of different dates from what I've read, then we'll have to change our ordinance to go along with that. But right now, that would cover us for products that are currently being sold, um, that they're putting into vape.
Well, I thought I read the definition of smoking. Can we just take that out of it? Can we take the word smoking out of it, out of the, um, definition of cannabinoids?
I don't know if that helps, helps or hinders us, to be honest.
Okay. Because there's so many uncertainties, I, I'm not sure how this process is gonna work in the future.
Yeah, I, I get, I think I get where you're coming from. It's just so they can't smoke marijuana, but that licenses aren't being issued yet.
You're saying you don't want to license these people if, you don't want to give up your position right now of being able to be the only licensee. If you're licensing these people for this and then it's gonna, will that be more detrimental to your cause if you want to have the only license, right?
No, um, let's say the BP, okay, is sell, sells it.
Okay.
And in our language, it says smoking is also a definition. Well, let's say they want to be a dispensary. So, they ask the state for a license and then come in front of us and say, well, your definition says smoking is included. So, I didn't, I wanted to make the language a little more clear for, um, like even Paul Burgley, he has a, has license. I want to make sure he's not thinking, hey, I should apply because I'd be able to sell marijuana here according to the language in our ordinance. Or, or it would be harder for us to tell them, no. That's what I'm trying to make sure that it would, we would still have, be able to say, no. We can't let it be done in that.
Well, I think to say no is gonna be to limit the number of licenses, which that's not in here at all yet.
I think I get, I think I get where you're going with that, so to distinguish the difference between mood altering THC, like in smoking a joint versus, uh, versus like a lotion or something like.
Distinct language.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying there.
And that's not in here yet either.
Okay.
This is the hemp derived, um, THC less than.
Okay.
Point three percent products. That's what's in here currently. So, the, the new law that's allowing full marijuana is not in here yet.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
And we were careful when we did this to not include things like what Paul sells there in this. That's why I think we went with that language about being edible or smokable or.
Right, if you just, correct, Mayor, if the, if the definition just said cannabinoid products, anyone that had the lotion, the tincture, the creams would also have to register with the city. Those do not. The way that this was written, it was everything else, but.
Okay.
That's why those are listed out too.
The only thing I had a question on, on it was, you had lined out, lined out the door to door for the 300 feet?
Correct, thank you for that. I did line out door to door, because the new law states that within a thousand feet of a school or 500 feet of a daycare, um, and it is not by door to door, it's by property line.
So, we have, we have no say in that then?
We can't be more restrictive than the, the state.
So, we could be less restrictive? Oh, so we couldn't be less restrictive either?
We can be more restrictive than the state, but we can't be less restrictive.
Yes, sorry, yes, yep.
Okay. Well, that's a, that's a big number.
We said 300 feet.
Right.
But you just took off the door to door to match what their language is, so.
Right.
That's a pretty aggressive number for liberal legislate, legislation on that.
Yeah, 500 and 1,000 and we were at 300?
Yeah, I mean, that's a long way from property line to property line, that's.
Well, I think that puts Paul out.
Yeah, he is, yep.
But that could be the other product though.
Yeah.
Does that include both products? Is that?
The 500 and 1,000?
The way that this, the way that the ordinance is written right now, it is just the cannabinoid derived from hemp is all that we have in here.
But the new law is what he's referring to. Is that gonna include that same product?
I believe so, yeah. I just want to make sure as the state, depending on how fast or how backwards they move, making sure that we don't have anything conflicting that could get, give a red flag to businesses that are just really keeping an eye on it. But I know that this will have to come back again.
I'm good with it, the way you, that you've changed it. I mean, really, just changing a couple of words in the, yeah. So, I, I would motion to approve that with the changes.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Good job, Josie.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to what is still gonna be K four, an ordinance to consider amending chapter 150.
So, this just changes the word, so we had already authorized or agreed upon the fee for the, what was a license for these cannabinoid products to a registration, and so now the word reflected within chapter 160 fees will say registration. So, then when our applicants come in in the next couple of meetings coming up, for those who have turned, I think we have three applications, then they will have the fees and the things associated with it being a registration for what matches.
Basically, all you did was change it from licensing to registration. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
I, I do want to add in one other thing about the fees. That will also be. That will also be coming back because as I, George, Mr. Councilman Heeman, as you asked about the fees, it is a little complicated. There are certain minimum fees or maximum fees not to exceed fifty percent of what they charge as a license. So we will have to keep track of what the state is doing and charging before we will know fees. So that chapter will also come back once we know more.
I don't know that a hundred and fifty dollars is going to be enough because, I mean, look at how much staff time we've already spent on it. So I wanted to say something about it, but.
Once, once we know what the state is doing on how they're charging those fees, or are they doing a flat rate, or are they really doing fifty percent of some other number? Once we get a better grip of what they're doing, then we can make a better analysis of what it takes us and the time for Chief Myers to, whether we're still doing background checks or we're not doing background checks, or if he's, how often they're doing compliance checks. All those things will need to get calculated again.
So you said we have three people coming in with applications?
I believe we have three businesses have turned in applications.
So could we put a hold on those until that? Or is that, is that too far? I mean, I don't.
Counsel's discretion, but I think that allowing what we have currently, it gives them the registration then to sell those till the end of the year.
Okay.
But again, these are just those Delta nine products and other CBD products that are not lotions.
It's kind of off topic, but Keith, are you looking to sell those edible products and the drinks? I think I saw an update that said you were digging into it, right?
Mayor and counsel, thank you for having me here. And I have been looking into the low dose, or low potency gummies and low potency drinks. I do want to point out that they don't have alcohol in them at all. It's either one or the other. And then to just kind of address one of your concerns you had, you brought up earlier about, do you serve anyone that, you know, looks like they're under the influence? You know, if somebody's visibly intoxicated, we'll refuse to sell them anything whether they're high, drunk, or on anything else. That's just standard, how we operate over there. We have been looking at bringing in the Delta eight and Delta nine. And the biggest difference is these are hemp based products. They're not marijuana based. That's kind of how they differentiate them. There are a lot of other liquor stores, municipals are looking at bringing them in. I know Cambridge has a big open spot on their shelf. There haven't been many that have brought them in because everybody wants to do it the right way, us included. There is a concern with, you know, credit cards, how we would have to do it as cash only. And the edibles, like the gummies, have to be behind the counter. The THC beverages can be on the sales floor, but we'd want them, you know, within the eyeshot of the counter as well. But I do want to point out that there is a big profit margin in those currently. You know, markup is usually around two hundred percent. So there is a lot of, a lot of money to be made. That's not our, you know, primary function, but it is nice to make, you know, as much money as we can. But I would like to sell them at the liquor store with your permission, you know, with your support, you know, responsibly and in a safe way.
So I, I have a, I know of a business that I have bought those drinks from before and they don't take cash at all.
They're doing it, they're not legally doing that.
Okay, so anybody that sells that stuff has to be cash, huh? Even the hemp derived stuff?
I reached out to our credit card processing company and asked them, what's your stance? Because some, some credit card processors will. And the reply that I got was, you know, some, some people will, will do that, but there is a very high risk of getting into trouble at the federal level or losing funds. Says we can do that, but you're, we put you in a higher risk, higher cost program. And so looking at that, if we're, if we're going to be selling something, my, you know, my job is to maximize profit. We'd just be cash only. We're not going to pay higher credit card processing fees to let people use credit cards.
Okay, so does, the CBD joint, they take credit cards too, so they're, I mean, that would be a.
So they're, that's between them and their processor. It's kind of a gray area.
Okay.
So what's your gut feeling on the market here if you were to do that? You think you'll do well?
My gut feeling is that I think the low potency gummies and, well, I think they'll do well. They'll do really well until the full strength stuff comes on the market. Then I think you'll see sales go down. And if the sales don't go down, I think you'll see the profit margin decrease a little bit because, you know, you can get stronger stuff for the same price, probably, you know? We won't be selling that. But I think there is a potential to responsibly make the city, you know, some money by offering that.
So your product, do you have to pay cash?
No. Not that I've, I've had, all of my liquor companies, like our distributors, I've been collecting sales sheets of what they're, what they're selling and how much they're charging and that, that would be, you know, on credit, just like we buy everything else.
Good, so there'll be a good way, we'll be able to track it very easily because you'll be, you'll have a record of what's coming in?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and we, and we are setting up at the store, we're setting up a separate department too. Like we have a liquor, beer, ice, other department. We'll have a cannabis department too. So anytime we want to run the numbers and see what our cannabis sales are, we'll have that. And we also have to, have to charge a ten percent sales tax on top of regular sales tax for cannabis products beginning July first. So we'll have to, you know, record and show that too.
Have you put any thought at all just about the liquor store being a dispensary also?
It can't be.
It can't be?
Nope, there's a, there's a specific list of items that a liquor store can sell and cannabis is not one of them.
Okay.
I know that talking with members of MMBA, MLB, there is a liquor store in Canada that has a liquor store and then a separate entry for a cannabis dispensary. And they are going to go up there and see how that performed and what kind of issues they've run into and stuff. But I haven't heard anything about, you know, what was.
I thought I seen language in the bill that mentioned something about municipality liquor stores and sales of cannabis. Now, whether they were completely separate or all entailed in one, I'm not sure. And like, like staff said, we'll probably have to wait three, four, or five months before a little bit more details come out. And that's why I'd like to see council leaders make a, take a little time to make hard decisions on what, how to move forward.
All right, so moving on to, oh, where am I? Case, well, K five now it is, yep. Resolution to consider purchasing a cooler and amending the 2023 liquor store budget.
All right, Mayor and council members, I put this memo together. We have a need for a three door cooler upfront. We currently don't really have a good place to put chilled wine. In the winter, you don't really have a big need for chilled wine and cooler, like wine products and stuff. But when it's ninety degrees outside, people want everything cold. We had originally planned to bring the three door cooler over from the old store. And that, that didn't work because that was actually kind of hardwired into the building. It had a separate cooling system. We didn't have a way to make that work at the new store. So I went online, I shopped around for comparable commercial coolers, and I have five quotes there. And the least expensive one gives us everything that we need. So, and another part that I think is kind of a cherry on top is shipping is free because we have a loading dock and they can just back up to that, otherwise we'd have to pay shipping. So that's another great reason and to thank you for giving us that loading dock when you built the store because that has come in handy a lot. But if, you know, if we have your permission to get this cooler ordered, it'll give us, you know, allow us to offer better service to our customers.
So I have a question on that. I noticed on the website, it says you can customize the display sign above the cabinet. Has that been considered and do you know the cost of that? Is that included for free or is that cheap?
It's included.
Okay.
And we would just have our logo up there.
Okay, just the City of Iceni logo?
Well, Iceni Liquor.
Or Iceni Liquor, okay.
Yep, we just put that on there.
Okay.
Steve, have you ever heard of this company, Eventco?
There's, like, three manufacturers of compressors in the world.
Just like hard batteries.
Just like tires.
There's three manufacturers of compressors. Will the company stand behind their product? That's an unknown. So.
I did research for the company and then.
You guys asked Steve that question, but not the restaurant guy?
True.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It doesn't matter.
I really want to know what you think, Steve.
Well, no, yeah.
He knows his refrigeration, I thought, so I thought.
Well, it's, it's, it's like anything. You can buy a Kia and then drive it forever and there's no resale on it. Buy a Cadillac, you pay premium price for it and it doesn't mean it's going to be any better than that Kia. It, if the company stands behind their product, it doesn't matter.
Does it have a warranty at all? Short term, long term, one year, ninety days?
Three years, I thought.
That I'm not a hundred percent sure on.
I looked up the company and I'm pretty sure there was a three year warranty on their refrigeration.
Eventco is the restaurant, is Webster's brand, so that's their in-house store brand, basically, so. But yeah, they're, they're just fine and they'll, I've had them, that's what I buy for my, if I buy new refrigeration, that's what I buy. Because you, by the time you, I could buy that newer, new refrigerator twice, by the time I'd pay for that Tru, which Tru is a good, solid brand and, you know, definitely better. It's not Delfield or, you know, some of those really, really high end stuff, but I mean, it's, it's.
Subzero.
Yeah, Charleston. But, but yeah, the Eventco stuff is just fine for what we're going to use it for, I mean, for chilling wine.
I didn't look into the specs. Are they just as efficient? Or are they going to, they're going to spin the meter twice as fast as spinning a few more thousand?
Maybe it's just as efficient as the rest of them.
The same amount.
Trust me, if Jimmy's buying it, it can't be spinning this meter too fast. That's teasing Jimmy, I'm just kidding. But he is right. I mean, let's see, he buys restaurant equipment. I'll be honest with you, if he's going to be buying that, that's the guy to talk to, but.
Well, and I used to buy used stuff and I, because this is so affordable, like there's no reason to even take a chance on used stuff because you might as well buy this, you know? It's just, it's, if you're going to buy new, I mean, that's the one to get, I think, so.
I'm going to motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the new cooler from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman. Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
I just want to add that, you know, that liquor store is doing us proud. And if he needs a cooler, let's get him a cooler no matter what.
Yeah, we can afford it.
Yep.
Good job.
Doing a good job.
Thanks.
Thorough research, too, getting that many options.
All right, moving on to case seven, water use and future water infrastructure discussion.
Mayor and council, so just to give you kind of up to date what, how much water we've been pumping. So June of last year, we pumped thirty-two million nineteen thousand gallons, or thirty-two million nineteen thousand gallons. We averaged one point zero six seven million gallons per day. Currently, we are averaging one point five six three, and it's just a little over that. This was kind of last week's late information. We're on track for forty-seven million gallons this month, and that's fifteen million gallons more this year than last year in the month of June. Our peak demand is between three o'clock and eight o'clock in the morning. That coincides with when people are doing their, irrigating their lawns. With the tower being down contributes to the concern of enforcing water restrictions because we don't have that reserve that the tower gives us. The wells in the morning between that three to eight mark, they're struggling to keep up. So they're running wide open, but because we don't have that tower, they're having to run harder and harder because we don't have that tower as that reserve. So we're not keeping up. We're kind of losing pressure in the morning when that, when everything is happening. The water main break that happened over the weekend caused our, that happened during our peak demand. Water pressure dropped extremely fast. Pressure was low for about an hour before getting it isolating, get water pressure back up again. The water tower is still on track to be done mid-July. According to the DNR, Iceni County is in a severe drought stage. And just to give you an impact on what's happened the last five years, in twenty seventeen, we pumped a hundred and sixty-six million gallons that year. In twenty twenty-two, we pumped two hundred and thirty-one million gallons. That's five years difference and that's close to sixty million gallons more. Mike can touch base a little bit on the infrastructure side of it.
Yeah, so the water main break kind of highlighted what's going on right now and a lot of that has got to do with the water tower. But we've got this, we've got kind of a problem with the trend here, right? So we last did our water supply plan in, in twenty eighteen and we had figured that by twenty twenty-two, population would be at sixty-seven hundred. We're at seventy, not quite seventy-two hundred, so. So, but it's not terribly far off. We're only off about six percent on that projection. So that's, that's pretty good. Unfortunately, the max daily water use projection is off forty-six percent. That gets to be problematic. Kind of that immediate concern is, is that if you have your, your biggest well go down, suddenly you may not really have enough water to go around. So kind of that initial, the initial thing that's coming up on capital from the finance perspective is, well, well for suddenly is moving forward in time rapidly as use grows considerably faster than population. The other thing I want to make sure that council is clear on is that at the situation that we're in right now, if we see water continue to rise much, considerably faster than population, the infrastructure needs that we have, the capital needs that we will have to pay for, move forward in time. If we see reduced water use, those same capital items, those same capital expenditures which we won't get away from in the long run can be farther out in time. The closer they are in time, the higher water rates are. The farther they are away, the lower water rates can be. I just want to make sure that there's a, that there's a clear understanding of how that's, how that's going to have to work. And, yeah, the second page, I'm going to give that, kind of that rough, you know, back of the napkin math that we've done with Bolton and Mink about where we're sitting and what the priorities need to be and what we might reasonably hope for. We've got some historical numbers in here and we've got some numbers that I've highlighted in yellow. Two thousand and seven, we were doing over two hundred million gallons a year. And we were able to get that down by about twenty-five percent. Staff's thought is that that's largely due to enforcing every other day irrigation. That can make a big, big difference. If that's, if council wants to go back to that type of enforcement and we can see that type of reduction, yeah, the amount of money that we spend in the next ten years and the waterfront changes pretty dramatically.
I guess I would, I would like to see some sort of enforcement on that, especially right now with the water tower down. That water main break was a bit of an eye opener just because I got so many messages about it and there's, I mean, water is an essential thing for, for human life. So if we're going to have to say you can't water your lawn, big whoopee, you know? I mean, grass comes back. It doesn't die. It just goes dormant. So I would like to see some sort of restriction being put on or us being more, I guess, vocal about it because people don't know. Like I said, I've, I've lived here for thirty years, thirty-one years, and I had no idea there even was an even odd water thing. People just don't know. And the fact that we could make people aware of it, I mean, education is probably going to cut, would cut the usage twenty, thirty percent just because people don't think about it. It's kind of like one of those things where it's like, you just take it for granted, you know? So, I mean, even like filling swimming pools and stuff, you know, there's, I had a thirty thousand gallon swimming pool and that, that's a lot of water, you know? There's a lot more people that are getting swimming pools. My neighbors just bought, both my neighbors just bought swimming pools, you know, it's, I don't know. So I think we're going to have to do something about it now. I don't mind some kickback on it if we're going to have to tell people that they have to water their lawn every other day or not at all or whatever. I don't mind the kickback personally, so.
Well, Councilman Heeman and myself, when we were there at that water break and I did tell George, I said, yeah, I think, I hate to be that guy, but I think we need to put the odd even day sprinkling ban on. It's just, and I'll be honest with you, ever since then, I've looked at my watch to see what day it is. I'm on an even number, so, you know, I ain't going to water today, I'll water tomorrow. You know, and it's just running the sprinkler in my front yard. It's not like an irrigation system. So I, I, I just think it's inevitable. Yeah, you want to be grumpy about it. I can't, you can't water today, but you know what? Tomorrow's another day.
I think most logical people would understand too. I mean, you're going to get a few that aren't, but it's, it is what it is.
But I think if you look on the city sign, it does save water bans and affect odd even days on it.
Which, and just so council's aware, we've always had that. It wasn't actually a restriction that we put in place for conservation if needed. Which, and just so council's aware, we've always had that, it wasn't actually in a restriction that we put in place for conservation if needed.
We just never enforced it.
It actually, we just weren't enforcing it, it's been there the whole time I've worked for the city of Iscany. It's just a matter if, when it, we, prior to last, you know, four years or so. We had someone driving around looking for things like that, looking for lots of code enforcement things, but that was one of them and they would post a door.
I would like, I would, it's gonna cost thirty-five hundred bucks or more, but I would like to send a letter out to everybody. Because even just a little bit of education, if we can drop ten percent water usage and maybe save the chance of having a catastrophic failure. I think it's worth the money to send out like a, you know, a single page letter saying that we're in a water shortage and we have, just explaining it a little bit and then things you can do, the top things you can do to save water in your house. I mean, that's.
Can we attach it to the water bill? To save.
We just had a discussion earlier about, about our texting thing that we've been talking about, I mean, that maybe would be a one way to, to maybe get the word out about it, but. I, I would like to know, because I hate the idea of telling people they cannot water their lawn whenever they want and. It just, it's, it just drives me nuts because I just think it's so silly, because what are we gonna drive around and actually, and apparently, I'd like to know, I guess. How many citations did we actually write or how many doors did we actually post in two thousand and seven, between two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight that had created that? That huge drop, you know, did we, is that actually the reason or was it the housing crisis and you can see our population actually decline a little bit, too, so. You know, I think, you know, and then you look at, well, what's caused this big increase? Well, the population increase has probably been a huge part of that, but all these new houses with the irrigation systems and, you know, and I think the first year that you have a new house, you can irrigate anytime you want, right? I mean, that's the, the rule, so. I don't know, I mean, I, either way, I think we need to. As long as it's just telling people or suggesting to people that, hey, this would be a good idea, it's, you know, we're not, I don't know, I mean, you don't want to say we're not going out and enforcing it, but, because it really is the rule, actually, but. I mean, I just, uh, I don't know, I guess I'd be curious to know, I mean, do we have that number at all, do we know how many citations we, we had put out in? Between two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, if that's really the reason for the drop or it just happened to kind of coordinate like that, but.
Can I say something first?
Yeah.
I'm looking at these numbers and it has nothing to do with population, this how, this has to do with, it has to do with drought. I mean, you can obviously see years of plentiful rain and, and usage going down and then, I mean, you should not have a change from two thousand and nineteen to twenty twenty of, of that much. Obviously, it rained a lot in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
That was COVID, more people are at home.
Dryer years, I know last year was extremely, extremely dry the year before, this is unprecedented, what we're going through right now, we haven't had this dry weather since, uh. Eighteen seventy-one, I believe it is, um, in east central Minnesota, up to this time. So, yeah, our system is being taxed big time, what we can do about it, I, I'm with you, Jimmy, I hate to tell people they can't, they can't water their lawns, but. We're only allotted two, how many millions of gallons a year?
Two hundred and seventy.
How much?
Two hundred and seventy million gallons, that's our DNR permit.
What happens if we reach that in August, let's just out of.
I'm, I'm assuming the DNR would fine us, I would think.
We're gonna have to do something about it at this point, never word.
What we, one of the things that we put in the water supply plan, uh, is conservation measures, things that we have within city code, things that we will enforce. Um, things that we will restrict further, so right now we have it in city code about the even odd water things. But it can get to the point where the DNR says, and they do put these, it's orange light, red light out, and say that you have to do what you said you would do in your plan, which. We put these conservation things in our plan, otherwise you don't get a permit approved, so they kind of get you where you have to do compliance on some of these conservation things. If they say we're in such a severe drought, we give you your appropriation permit, you need to now do some of these things. So we're not saying to ban water completely or of irrigation or anything like that, it's just to do what we currently have unless we get our hand forced and maybe it is a fine. If we don't, I'm, I'm not sure.
Wha- what's the cost of a letter to go out? To every resident or every household?
I think it's fifty-two cents.
I was gonna say maybe fifty-five, but in that ballpark, you know, um, and as far as like the paper and the ink, it's a minuscule amount.
Four thousand dollars probably, total, roughly thirty-five hundred to four thousand. But if it saves us a two million dollar. Infrastructure issue.
Right.
I mean, you're gonna see a drop, you're, you'll see it, we'll see a noticeable drop just by sending a letter.
We could also couple that with a stormwater mailing and we do have some funding for marketing for public education and outreach and that, too, so that could share some of the cost.
It's a good idea.
The text would be cheaper if you're gonna do it.
Yeah, well, that won't get out soon enough. It won't get out soon enough.
Oh, you're saying you want to do it like immediately?
I think we need to do it immediately.
Like, yeah.
So I'm in a motion that we go along with the watering ban and do a mailer.
Mayor and council, I just have one, one last thing to touch on that, if we move forward with the watering ban, is the enforcement side of it, is that an admin citation, a misdemeanor, or is that just a warning or what, what does that look like?
What do you think, Josie?
Total watering ban or you're saying even, or even an odd days?
Even an odd days. Enforcing even and odd days. Watering restrictions. What would be the enforcement side of that, Josie?
Mayor and council.
Chief Myers will.
So, it come into a nuisance thing, so we would have, mostly they're between three and four, we'd have a uniform officer going to these houses, knocking on their door at four or five in the morning. Um, we have the authority to issue a misdemeanor citation for doing so or telling them to shut their water off. But we'll do whatever council wants us to do, if you want the police, uniformed officers to enforce watering at three, four, five in the morning, at your direction, we will do it. If you want some other way of education or enforcement, we'll do that, uh, too, but just, it's up to how you want to handle it.
I can speak to, as a person who's gotten a fine in the city I currently reside in. Not this year, but, um. You get a warning in Becker first, uh, just hung on your door, if they see you odd watering on a wrong day and then you get a fifty dollar fine. And then a second offense, you get a hundred dollar fine and the letters come in the mail, so I think that's effective.
I would be fine with that, I think we should make it cheaper.
Just to be clear, are you guys, council's okay having uniformed officers at four in the morning, five in the morning?
Absolutely not.
No.
Absolutely not.
No.
Just want to make sure, yeah.
Not, not happening.
I think we see, I think, I think if they see it, notify it, give them a letter, take down the address, whatever, let staff get a letter out. Give them a notice, next time it's fifty bucks, next time it's a hundred dollar bill.
Or more.
Well, in charging those fees, so I, we have within our fee schedule, like administrative citation fees amounts, we can't have special amounts for just this, so if we don't want to go with the misdemeanor. Um, and we want to go with the fee structure, I think that it would need to follow our administration fee, what, is that sixty-five, I'll look it up real quick.
And do you want these letters coming from the police department saying we're noticing your violation, do you want them coming from the city?
I think, I think the first letter should definitely come from the police department.
It'd be more impactful.
Be more, I think it would be more of a tension grabber.
Yep.
And it, the first one would be a warning letter, is that, is that?
That's what I'm saying, first one's a warning letter.
First one's a warning letter, that.
I think it's, you get warned.
Most people.
Came on you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think the first letter should come from the city hall, I don't think it's.
Okay.
I think if we're gonna, if you guys are gonna go with, uh, enforcing it, I think we should be a little bit more gentle, at least to begin with, wouldn't you say?
Yeah.
I think a warning letter that fits from the police department is gonna be say, hey, next time it's gonna cost you some money. I don't, it, it comes from the city hall or police department, it, it isn't, you say I'm being warned.
So currently what we have.
Open it probably.
When code enforcement went over to the police department, some of those things moved over, so administrative citations is falls with under the police department, not that it, the letter couldn't be drafted by other staff, but it is sixty dollars.
The fine is sixty dollars.
Sixty dollars for an administrative citation fee. If council desired to have a different amount for specific irrigation fee, like, uh, penalties, we'd have to put that within city code before we could start cha- charging that.
Is there, is there a second administrative fee increase? Or is it still sixty bucks?
We, we only have it listed once, um, I think that the first one would be a warning, no fee. And we'd have to look at the chapter, so we do detail out how you do administrative citation, so I think it's the fourteen days, is right?
Yeah, there's no aggregate on, on that one, so it'd be sixty dollars every time unless you wrote them a misdemeanor citation, make them show up to court.
I think though for if you, um, the first time is a warning, then you get the fee and if you do it again, there's no warning, you just get another fee, another fee, another fee.
Guys, I'm still, I'm, I'm really doubting the effectiveness of this plan. I mean, I, I get where you're going from and you want to do something just because you see a problem, but I don't know that it's gonna really solve a problem, would be my guess.
I'd rather do a letter first, just see if we can cut usage, I love that text, if we can get that, uh, text system up and running.
I mean, we probably could make an approval to say we're gonna do a text like that within a certain budget that not to exceed type of budget.
It would be a lot cheaper.
If you feel like we want to.
Than a letter?
Yeah, a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
You could grant authority to staff to do that and not just see the certain dollar amount, whichever was more.
But I'd rather do something like that and just say, you know, we're asking residents to abide by these. You know, even in odd watering days to help with water usage during this drought time or something along those lines.
Is there, is there a way, and just because I'm unfamiliar, is there a way to not have it by zip code, because then you're gonna catch other people, can you get it just within a jurisdiction limit?
See, I don't, I don't know about that, I mean, I think you.
I think area people for a water main break don't care, but if you tell somebody.
Well, when you get the list, so you get, so I mean, like, the list that I had when I had done it previous was, okay, you get it and. You know, I can go through and look at the addresses on the list, so I mean, I could take out the li- the ones that are not within the city, I can't remember exactly how.
How do you get the list?
Uh, well, it was the, the texting company will give you the, they'll sell you the list as well, but. Um, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm not sure if that's, we'd have to look into it, I don't know if it's even possible to do for.
We have some cell phone numbers people provide, but we don't require a phone, so we wouldn't know.
Yeah, you can't just send them, you have to, yeah, it has to be through that.
Can, can we, so we really do have, uh, I mean, I guess evidence, uh, of other cities that have had to go to. True enforcement and we do have tracked, you know, numbers that dropped twenty to thirty percent in a month. Um, of being able to, if, switching from no enforcement to strict, you know, follow up, really does track that. Definitively on those peak times, that's the key that we're trying to get away from.
You're killing me here, man.
Unfortunately, I think we have to do it, man, I think, I think we have to, like, this is, eh, if we have. If we lose a, another main or a well, we're, we're in a lot worse situation than not being able to mold or water the grass.
Yeah.
That's, the risk, the risk aversion, we'd have to do it for something like water, it has to be done.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not the end of the world, we tell people they can't water their grass every day.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, and maybe it's only, maybe it's only a month and then after this month, maybe it rains a lot, maybe it'll start raining next week a lot.
Yeah, right. No, I don't know, I mean.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with the, I personally like the letter, the text and doing the enforcement.
Well, if we're doing enforcement, let's skip the letter and the text.
No, but the letter and the, the letter and the text will get everybody to know and the enforcement will get the people that are actually breaking it.
That's true, too.
I mean, maybe once you send the letter and the text, there won't be, we won't need enforcement, but it. I would just hate to, we would look extremely stupid if something happened and we lost water in our town and we didn't do anything about it beforehand, we would look, we would look silly. I, I've worried about this last week, too, when that water main broke down the street from my house, it's like, well, we look kind of silly right now. Because we're supposed to be the leaders for this community and if we can't provide them with water.
Funny thing is, is that we are improving the water infrastructure.
Yeah, right, but it's just a bad, yeah.
Most horrible time for this to happen.
It is, it is.
And it's like, we're actually, we're doing our job, but we sure don't look like it, you know, so it's like, you really took it in the shorts.
There was also a fire the night before and it could have happened from, from shutting out the hydrant too fast, too, you get that.
Pressure.
Yeah, that pressure, we don't know what cost.
Called water hammer.
Water hammer, yep.
Mayor and council, what about putting up yard signs, you could buy quite a few yard signs, um, and put them in the right of way.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Um, if you were thinking of spending three thousand dollars on, or something, a couple thousand on mailings, maybe that's something. Other cities have done it, Zimmerman's done that, done those, they've done sandwich boards, I mean, it does take staff time to put them out, people might get rid of them, I mean, it does pepper our city, it looks. If that's the look you don't mind, maybe that's a way to get the word out.
I like that idea, I was going to ask you about that a little while ago, um, I, some political type signs. You know.
Yeah, I mean, that would get the word out, for sure.
It would get the word out.
And you're getting it out to the people, the people that you want to reach.
They are expensive, seven to ten bucks a piece for a political sign.
The bigger ones.
Yeah.
But you, you can, you can buy a hundred of them for.
I'm thinking like there are little street dance signs, I mean, we, I think we can get those through Vista Print, they don't have to be anything fancy.
Yep.
I mean, we could obviously cost out a few places, but.
Put them in all the major entries, ways into the divisions, wouldn't need us.
Put one on one side of the street that says even days, one says odd days on the other side, just put them on every corner. Every corner of the block, then everybody would know, right? I like that idea. Yeah, even odd, yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I like that idea, I think that's, that's a good way to probably get the word out and, you know, and then at least if you guys want to go forward with enforcing and. You know, I, I could probably get behind that and at least we've given everybody a fair warning then, you know, that, hey, we're, this is what we're asking you to do, so.
I think the text option is a good one, too, so you said roughly six cents a text.
Yeah, but I, the more I'm thinking about that, I don't know if that is a strictly political type of thing where they allow that or if it's. But I mean, I guess it's, you, you get it from roofing companies, of course, and that kind of thing, too, so I'm sure that there's, there's options for that, but you don't want to be annoying either with.
Well, yeah, but like, one text and isn't.
Not just one.
We'd also have to consult the city attorney just to make sure that a government entity can do it.
Okay. You know, six cents, six cents per text, say there's seventy-two hundred residents, that's four hundred and thirty-five dollars, plus you gotta pay the list year, probably talking seven hundred, eight hundred bucks. But then everybody gets it right away, it's a lot cheaper than a letter, everybody gets it, most people are gonna read it, you know, I don't.
I think text messages, they have a really high.
Yeah, I think it's more cost effective maybe than the letter, if you don't want to spend the money on the letter, but I think we should do the, look into the text thing no matter what, it's very, it's really affordable.
We should, yeah, but the, the yard, the yard sign idea would get the word out pretty quickly, I mean, we could probably get those in a couple of days, I suppose.
We can just attach it to the amber alert.
All right, let's, let's move this forward, what, what are we, what are we gonna do?
So can we, maybe, could we make a recommendation that staff maybe spends up to a certain amount of money on total?
I do think it should be a motion and then if they, if it carries and then take a vote on it, just because it's unbudgeted, um, for whatever dollar amount that you want to set. Also, just to get clarification, so we're gonna, if we do move forward with putting up signs, getting more notices out, we can use our Facebook and, and things, what we have as well at our fingertips. What did we decide for enforcement after we notify and get the word out?
So, a notification and then the administrative citation, then maybe after that it would be a misdemeanor type thing or just continue to hit them with the fee.
If we could do those in two separate motions, if there are motions to put up, place on, on the floor, one for the signs or notify, notifying up to a certain dollar amount. And then if I could request a second motion and if it carries for doing the enforcement part.
Signs would be a good thing, we can always change the dates on them and we can keep them forever.
Yes, and.
So I would say if we went up to thirty-five hundred dollar maximum on the signs, that thirty-five hundred dollars could go for a span of ten years, as long as the signs don't get destroyed.
Okay. Yeah, and then.
That's what I make a motion for.
Could you, could we make the motion to add the texting or any other things or maybe up to like a total amount?
I think we need to find out what the texting is gonna happen first, let's get these signs going first.
Okay.
We need to, we need to get through this hurdle first.
Let's not spend, I don't, I don't want to write a blank check for that much, can we, how about a thousand?
You're gonna buy four signs, huh? Well, I mean, gee, come on, guys, this is getting ridiculous. That well goes down tomorrow and we lose water for a flipping month, we're gonna have a hell of a lot more problems with the state of Minnesota. I mean, you, you, you want to do this.
A thousand dollars will buy you like a couple hundred signs.
You decide what you want to do, I give up.
I don't think we'll place any dates on them, we'll be able to use them year after year.
Right, and. Anybody have an average, an idea what the average price of a sign is?
Seven to ten dollars.
Yeah, if you order, if you order them online, they're way cheap, yeah.
Yeah, I thought they were like two to four dollars.
Yeah, if you get them online at the right spot, they're really cheap, yeah.
I guess I, I ordered, I ordered two hundred and they were seven bucks a piece for a double sided with, uh, two colors. So, for a, for a.
This size or this size?
No, this. No, this size, the small ones, the big ones are about thirty bucks a piece, the four, the two by fours. And the really big ones are about two hundred bucks a piece, the four by eights.
So we'd be looking at about a hundred and twenty signs for a grand?
Yeah, hundred, hundred.
At least that many, and we don't, we're not gonna find a hundred and twenty places to put signs, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
You can't just go put them in random people's yards, so.
Could we, I mean, could we maybe make a compromise and say two thousand dollars for, just for any sort of spending, whether we wanna boost a Facebook post or put out signs, maybe have the staff kind of decide. I mean, if we have two thousand or three thousand dollars for them to work with, say if they come in, if they get text information, they can get our text out tomorrow or two days from now for five hundred bucks, then they have a little bit of flexibility to do what they feel is the best because.
So you wanna make a motion for yard signs or texting?
An aggregate of maybe twenty-five hundred dollars is, that's what the motion I would like to make, because then it gives them some flexibility and we need to get some out ASAP, whether it's signs, texts, Facebook pushing, I mean, I, I think that's a fair ni- a fair number.
Could do a Facebook ad and do some geo fencing.
Yeah.
Push it out.
Yeah, I mean, is twenty-five hundred enough? Do you think twenty-five, three thousand, somewhere in there? Just because it is important that we get the word out on this like ASAP, cause it, it could be a huge problem. So, I mean, Matt, what do you think about, you got any ideas or are we not spending, not talking about enough money? I mean, it's, you're the.
I think you're on the right track, I think that the areas that I see people irrigating on the wrong days are the ones in the houses that are three, four years old and they just never changed back their, their controller, they just didn't know it, just somebody comes out and turns it on and somebody comes out and blows it out and turns it off. So I think that there's certain areas where more signs would be useful than others.
Okay.
Maybe in the south in the town, there's not a lot of irrigating happening down there.
Yep.
You might not need too many signs down there, but some of these newer areas that are a couple of years old, that's where I'm seeing people wanna keep that yard really nice and those are the ones that are, you have the most uncompliance, so to say.
Okay.
So a hundred signs you think would be more than enough? Or not enough, or?
I mean, think about it as election season, I had, I had two hundred signs out, I don't know how many Jimmy had, but you saw them fairly regularly at two hundred. Now at a hundred, I don't know if it's regular enough, I mean, I don't know if we have places to put all these signs, if you can just put them in the right of way because it's the city and we can do what we want.
If, if we can get enough signs and we don't, if we can get two hundred signs and we don't have to put them all out, signs are gonna disappear. People aren't gonna want the sign there, so just, we'd have extra.
Yep.
We'd have extra for next year, if we didn't, if we wanted to, you know, hold on to the same thing next year, I think two hundred signs would probably be the way to go.
Okay, so that's roughly probably fourteen hundred bucks with the signs and the stakes.
And how, how big a signs are we talking? How big? Okay.
I mean, I, yeah, I guess, I don't know. How much money you guys wanna, three thousand, I don't know.
Twelve hundred.
Huh, total?
That'll buy a lot of signs.
Yeah, but what about if we wanna do a Facebook or text or any of that?
Well, if you threw three hundred at, at Facebook ads, you'd be, be able to cover this, just, just the city itself, because you could.
Yeah.
Pretty cheap, I would say three hundred bucks spread out on three campaigns would probably get to almost everybody, because it's not that big of a market you're looking to get out to. So anybody on Facebook, and if you put out a ad that said, please tell your neighbors, hey, if you notice your neighbors sprinkling and they're not doing it on the right dates, you know, could you ask them, you know, inform them of the ordinance or something like that? Just inform them of the ordinance.
Add a line your neighbor, all right, twenty-five hundred bucks.
I'm, I'll make the motion for twenty-five hundred dollars and let staff spend it how they feel would be the most appropriate.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. I mean, Jesus, you guys are just, you're beating things to death, we don't, we have to do something.
Yeah.
And it's by giving them in a dollar amount, I, staff is going to be responsible. It's just that if you, they all of a sudden they're gonna go over it and now it delays it another two weeks, that's why I sent them out that I did.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill for the twenty-five hundred dollar budget for signs and texting. I have a second from Councilman Lundin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero. So now the enforcement part of it, so. Yeah, I mean, that's the direction the council's gonna have to make. Who's gonna write a letter, do you want it to come from us saying we're gonna cite you? And then we give them four, five, six, seven days and then we come and cite them every day that they're watering the next time? So we could rack up, within the next two weeks, somebody could get seven or eight citations, right? So I mean, those are the decisions you're gonna make, not saying that's what I think we should do, I'm just saying that is the letter of the law that would be pertaining to the violation piece of the puzzle. So it's up to your direction on how aggressively you wanna have the police enforce nuisance, because it's a change from how we've been enforcing nuisance from your direction in the past, right? We've been a complaint based, so now we need, as far as the police department, your direction on exactly how do you wanna proceed? Because when we start getting flack from people, at least we can say we're doing what we're told to do. We're not the elected officials, we're just carrying out their, their will as far as the enforcement piece. So that's what you need to think about, I mean, do you want, we have two weeks, I mean, the other option, if you want just a letter to go out and see how many letters we get and how many, we can try to get some information on how many non-compliant people are a week later, without doing enforcement, I mean, that's your prerogative as well.
That's the way I'd like to go, I'd like to just see, inform, inform the people that are doing it that shouldn't be doing it and, and let this ride for a month and see how water usage is. You know, we're, everybody's praying for rain, we have some coming this weekend with a lot of luck, you know, that's gonna solve the problem. We get some rain here in the next month. Not completely, but it's definitely.